Seems to be a very nice lady.
She's very nice. I think she's gonna be a great addition.
We're back? Thank you. Okay, everybody at home, we're back on. It's almost nine thirty. We still have some more things to take care of. Denise, we're folks on the board. Is that where we are?
Yes.
Did we take care of that request? Did we vote on three five?
No.
We didn't?
So, this is the next and hopefully last request from the road commissioner for an additional seventy thousand in deficit spending for snow and ice.
Were we at two hundred and ten thousand or one forty?
One forty.
This is two ten.
Two ten, yeah, three, three seventies, yeah.
We have spent to date a hundred and ninety seven thousand. So, this gives us about thirteen thousand in extra money that hopefully if it's just cleanup work or just paying overtime, we'll be okay. If we have any significant snow, we may be coming back again. One of the items which I had further down, but I'll tell you all now. The bill for the snow removal of the Bagnell School was fifty nine thousand dollars. The bill for the removal of the snow because of the way it was dumped was about eight thousand dollars. So, it was about sixty eight thousand dollars to remove the snow.
To remove the snow from Bagnell School?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I will tell you, Pentucket is currently over a hundred and ten thousand with what they've spent for the high school and middle school. One of my frustrations is I use the same company that Merrimack and Pentucket used. They were highly recommended. I met with them. He gave me a price range, a per hour price range. But when the bill came in, we were charged at the high end and the other two communities were charged at the low end. And when I questioned him, he said it was because we were the third school and his guys were tired and they weren't gonna work if they didn't get the higher rate. I told him I didn't think that was appropriate and that I was gonna bring it to this board and make it public. But that's the number they stuck with and...
Who said that?
The contractor.
What's the name of the company that did this?
Can I?
Brandalini Construction.
Can I talk on that roof stuff or I have to abstain?
You can.
So, if you negotiated into a price with them, they should have held their price, shouldn't they?
He gave me a range. The range was forty to sixty dollars an hour. And I asked how much and he said he wouldn't know until he got up on the roof to actually give me an estimate. I never got an estimate. He went up on the roof and did the work and then sent us the bill.
Well, I know as me as a selectman, I would, I would say that I would try and go back and negotiate halfway. That's how I feel. But I think that, that's, I would never do that to a customer.
I agree. And I tried and I told them the newspapers are following this. This board is gonna, I was gonna bring it public to this board. That was their price.
I wanna add a little bit of, that's important. Can we negotiate or we're done?
You certainly, well, we've actually, I have a check cut. I haven't sent it, but you can certainly...
At the low end, what would the number be?
Was anyone there to manage their hours?
No. I don't know. So, their hours were, I'm paraphrasing the bill, but it was about seven hours the first day, ten hours the second day, and twelve hours the third day. And the number of men increased each day. It started off at twenty something, then went to thirty something, then went to forty something.
Would you entertain the thought...
There was no one there to manage it. There was no one there to count the men. There was no one there.
No, no. Other than what they're saying. I mean, I'm assuming we can get payroll records of who they reported on the site, but...
Would you entertain the thought of engaging in a conversation with contracted with one of us?
Sure. I mean, you could reach out to them. I have no problem with that.
Are they local?
Haverhill.
They're Haverhill?
I mean, you've got your hands in a lot of things for us and we don't want you to get involved in a knockout, dragout situation. But maybe, maybe Bill or Betty can approach and, you know, try to negotiate a better opportunity.
Well, the only, the only thing, I mean, I...
This is a fairness.
The only thing that, I don't know. I didn't count men, but I, one of the schools I plow in...
You quoted John?
I was there. I didn't see twenty men the first day, but there might have been some up on the roof. I saw them having their coffee break down on the ground. I saw them physically having their coffee break in the seven. But there could have been some men on the roof. I don't know. I wasn't micromanaging it. I just did my business. But I don't know. I, I don't know. I would, I would, I don't know.
Well, let me also add an update.
Like you said, they have payroll records.
On the regional finance committee meeting last week, there was a vote taken by the board, by the committee, to form a subcommittee consisting of the highway department heads in all three towns and to meet with Greg LeBrecq and also the superintendent to come out with a, what I consider to be a proactive plan so that as snow accumulates, before it gets to dangerous levels, there'll be a removal of snow. Because I do believe that this horrible expenditure, some of it, could have been prevented. And I was thrilled to hear that people were in agreement, especially people from the Merrimack Highway Department who were quite upset with how the whole affair was handled. It put their men in danger. It created an emergency out of when it didn't have to be an emergency. So, that's part of the problem. Now, this other problem is maybe Bill or Betty can approach, you know, the contract either with or without you Denise. And it doesn't hurt to try. My mom always said, "Doesn't hurt to try" at this point.
I agree. I even told them that the newspaper may follow up to ask these same kinds of questions and that was what their price.
Can we, can we be proactive as a board and ask Denise to write him a letter and ask for his payroll records? Is that legal?
Well, we can do that.
And it's not putting it on to Billy or Betty. It would be the board asking for the records.
I think a businessman under pressure would be more, my guess is anything in writing is gonna be less effective than if one of us picks up the phone and say, "Can I have coffee?" or "Talk to you about this over coffee" or something. You know, just have an informal discussion, which I think, I hate to ask you to maybe consider it, but I think you'd be ideal.
I have no problem doing it, but what I'm saying is, talk is cheap. That's how I think it, talk is cheap. I mean, I've gotten before a good talker and they can talk to you and talk to you and talk to you and then you believe them. But, I mean, payroll records are payroll records, but I guess he could give me whatever he wanted. If he told you there's twenty people on the roof and he had twenty payroll records or time cards or however it was done, I mean, I think that's being proactive as a, as a board. And if we're not happy with it at that point, then we, we go to the next thing. That's just me.
And Betty, just sometimes just hearing from somebody else, you know, Betty?
What's the name of the company?
Bring in a different approach.
Brandalini Construction.
Out of Haverhill?
Yes.
Maybe Betty will, will take, take the ball with that.
I'm not saying I won't.
And so, sixty eight thousand for Bagnell School, included the snow removal also.
Correct. And that was the number. Bobby had said it would be about eight thousand to remove the snow. And he actually did more than was necessary because he felt the piles that were left there were too high and unsafe for the kids to be around. So, he actually removed quite a bit more snow than even just the roof snow.
The one ten, was that for the middle school and the high school?
That's what they were at the last time I'd spoken to them, yes, for those two buildings.
And Merrimack, did they take care of their own roofs?
No, Merrimack used the same company I did.
What did they have to pay?
I don't know. They were at the forty dollar rate, so I don't know what did.
It's a lower rate. It's a regional district and he gives us another number.
And it was all billed through Pentucket, so it wasn't even like he billed the town of Groveland separately at all. Everything came to Pentucket Regional Schools. It's just ours had Bagnell, so it came to me.
Well, like I said, either Betty or Bill or both can maybe reach out and let's have, you know, a healthy discussion about it.
I don't think it's fair. I don't.
I think it's very unfair.
I agree.
Did you include a copy of that?
I'll make a copy.
Betty, can I ask you, seeing what Joe's put it on to us, would you be inclined with me to have Denise write a letter and say, "We're looking for some payroll records" and we'll see where that goes with the first?
Sure.
I mean, that, I mean, if you have...
I'd like some justification.
Right. If you have some, if you have, if you have documentation in front of you, now we have some documentation. If we don't get the documentation, if we don't like what, then we can go ahead. We can sit down with them and we'll talk with them.
Did you only see our bill or did you see the others?
I only saw ours.
Well, if you feel, if you feel strongly about that, I mean, I'll support that, of course.
If you take a hundred and ten, and what did it cost for the Bagnell?
You guys have to go in.
Fifty nine thousand.
Not the, not the, not the highway.
Yeah, fifty nine.
So, if you take a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten, to do the high school and the junior high school, which is much more roof than we have, I mean, that's...
But it's twenty dollars less a person, an hour.
Right, 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 right.
Hi, I'm in a meeting. Hello?
I don't know. I would like to start by doing that. I mean, if Betty, I'll sit down with Betty and do it. I don't have a problem. I'll do it alone. I don't care. I, I just don't like doing things alone because...
Well, you wanna take a ride over?
She said, she said, "Oh, we'll have a meeting. We can probably have him come over."
Good idea.
But we could probably start with the letter. That's gonna, at least you can hold a check for the time being. We'll write the letter, ask to see the records and see what the response is. If it doesn't, then Betty, are you gonna agree to sit down with me and we'll have the guy come in?
But can you and I do that?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know. Oh, okay. All right.
You could, you could, no, you could meet and make a phone call. You couldn't engage in discussion amongst you about the outcome of that phone call, but you could have the phone call.
Yeah, okay.
So, one person would make the phone call or we both make the phone?
No, you can both make the phone call, but you two can't discuss and vote anything based on that phone call.
Okay, I understand. But could you have...
We're just looking for information.
Right. Could you have that person, the foreman owner, come in and sit with us in a meeting?
If they're going to. I don't know that they will.
Well, that's all we can do is try.
Well, I think we owe the taxpayers that.
I, I agree a hundred percent with you. I do. I agree, I do.
You know what? We, we acted in good faith. We acted as quickly as we knew there was an issue. It's not our fault that they got tied up someplace else and got to us third or whatever they did.
Did he tell you that conversation afterwards they were tied and that's why the bill came in or did he tell you that before?
No, he told me that when I questioned why we would charge sixty dollars an hour.
And we have good grounds to stand on. Betty, we have good grounds to stand on because he told Denise to come after the fact.
Right.
So, that's too bad.
And I will say, he did tell me the range was forty to sixty.
Right.
But then when the other two were forty and they recommended me, they recommended him based on the price they were quoted.
Absolutely. That's why we ended that agreement.
I did, I did the junior high and high school roof, I don't know, last time we had this problem. And I charged them fifty dollars an hour per man. And, and I was probably on the high end, I guess, then. But they hired me to do it and I was able to do it in a short period of time and, and it was taken care of. But I know as a landscaping people cannot get sixty dollars an hour to send a landscaper to do. So, I think, I, not to get into it, I think we should write the letter.
Whatever you feel comfortable with that.
I think we should write the letter. I think we should bring them, bring them, get, get the response. If we can't get the records, then we'll turn around or even get an itemized, whatever he did. If we don't get that, then we'll have a meeting with him and just hold the check up on the interim until we figure it out.
Good. I like that idea.
We haven't sent the check. Nope.
Fine.
And do I need to make a motion or not? Or just talk?
No, you don't need to make a motion.
No, it's a consensus of the board. It works. Just...
I think we owe, like Betty said, I think we owe to the taxpayers and I think that, you know, that's our job.
The only thing is like, like when I've gone into situations with the consent of the board, you wanna come back and fully report it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
He sends us, sends us backing.
You don't have to, you don't have to type out a report.
This is what went on. Actually, made every effort to...
So, needless to say, that is why the seventy thousand dollar request was put in for the additional deficit spending.
Great.
Okay, we got to that. Let's take it.
Yes, so if you would like to take a vote on that.
A motion that we allow the highway commissioner for seventy thousand dollars in deficit spending at the FY fifteen snow and ice line item.
Go ahead, Bill. You wanna make a motion?
Do I throw a fine?
Should, we should do it maybe.
Okay, I get it. Yeah. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we allocate the seventy thousand dollars FY fifteen snow and ice to the snow and ice account for the additional expenditures incurred for the extraordinary snow removal.
Second. All in favor?
Aight.
Okay, so we have minutes to...
Can I just get for the record, did you abstain from that? Okay.
Bill did.
So, Bill abstained.
And we, and we did not wanna discuss it.
And then we say, "I abstained because it had to do with our highway."
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanted to say that when she's taking the minutes, can I dump that?
We have executive session minutes from January fifth. We have minutes, regular minutes from January fifth and January twelve. Minutes from the department boards and committee workshop of the seventeen, seventeenth of January regarding permitting. Executive session minutes. Shall we do them one at a time or what do you think Denise?
It's up to you.
There was one I wasn't at.
The twenty third, but that's not on here because that was just the last meeting.
All right.
I, I, I've read them. I've read them. I typed them out, so...
And you're fine with them?
I'm fine with them.
Do I have a motion to accept all the minutes, executive session minutes?
So, items two through nine on the agenda is what you...
Two through nine is correct, yes.
And I have a motion that we do that from Bill?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes, number two through nine, as read and documented.
And I'll second that?
All in favor.
Aight. Thank you for that.
Policy on membership of board and commissions by selectmen.
I think we've had two readings on this without voting.
Yes.
Plus take home reading, so...
I, I have one concern.
For which one?
On the membership of board and commissions by selectmen. You both serve on the Board of Selectmen and you also serve on ZBA. And Joe, you also served on Capitol.
I'm serving on...
Community preservation.
Community preservation and also the cable TV board.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. When one of those boards, hypothetically, if one of those boards were to, he served with a lawsuit, does that put you in any jeopardy by serving on two committees? Do you see that as happening?
I mean, it shouldn't unless, unless someone's being sued personally. If, if you're, if someone's suing...
You're being served as, sued as a board, very different than if it was...
Correct. So, if someone has an issue or wants to appeal a ZBA decision or wants to actually, it shouldn't have anything to do with the capacity here. They really should be two very separate positions. It should be known that it's not, you know, I know Bill and I, Bill and I have had a conversation about zoning board and at times they've said to him, "Well, you're a selectman." You know, really, when he's in that seat, he's ZBA. He's not a selectman.
I know.
When Joe is on the cable, he's not a selectman. He is the cable. So, they really shouldn't be blurred lines. It should be, you're serving in that role. You're voting in that capacity. If you're a liaison or you're appointed, so Joe, I believe you're on community preservation as an appointment from the, a member of the board?
No, I'm a full member.
Oh, so that's separate. So, so if it was something that, you know, capital improvement had a representative from this board, then it's different, but you guys are serving in your own separate capacity on those boards. It shouldn't have anything to do with...
I just thought I'd bring that up because I...
Shouldn't have anything to do with it.
That's a good point.
I just...
I, I mean, for the most part of this here, I'm, I'm in favor. I can tell you if I'm being on a board, then I'm gonna actually send my resignation in pretty soon. But the problem is, is when you're a selectman and you get on these boards, in these powerful boards, like, they turn to you. They, it just...
They, they don't separate.
They don't separate. And that's why I'm not...
You can do all the separation in the world, but they're looking for the inside scoop because, hey, you're on the board of selectmen.
They're looking for support.
Right. And I just, I, I was...
So, you're thinking about resigning from what?
From the board I'm on. I don't wanna say it, but I haven't told them yet. So, I mean, I'm just...
Not the board of selectmen?
No, no, the board I'm on. But I'm saying that it's a tough position to be in because they turn to you automatically in the power that you're in and it puts you in a tough position. And I just don't like it and that's why.
Well, it also, more, well, what we feel personally is important, but more importantly, it puts you in a position of not being able to serve the town well. If you're, if all you do is zoning board, you're gonna serve better than when you bring in a, you know, with a contingency because you're on another board and there's expectations of you to act as, and, and vote a certain way unfortunately, so... You can control yourself well, but other people just won't view you that way. You know, and I've come to meetings here and I've stayed, you know, stood on a chair here. So, I'm, I'm only speaking for myself. I'm from Nine Cherry Tree Lane. I'm Joe Demore, but nobody's listening.
It's hard.
So, you have to be very careful what you say.
I just don't wanna be in that position anymore. That's all.
No, it's good. It's understandable.
That was my concern on that. You know, anybody can, well, all adults can do, do what we want. But when it gets you and puts you in peril, I guess, that's what I'm concerned about. All right. Do we want to adopt that policy?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a board of selectmen policy, membership of boards and commissions by selectmen as written.
And do I have a second on that?
Um, yeah, I, I'd second it.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
We don't need further discussion. I don't think we... All in favor? That's unanimous. And then number eleven, policy on attendance at public meetings by VOS members. You just kinda said it, Joe. When you sit there, they assume, they ask you a question and then they run with it.
That's why we, we, we have a board...
Have to be cautious.
Yeah, we, we've written, just so the public's aware, the board of selectmen has decided to engage in a process. We're working together on a process of setting policies that will help govern how we, how we do our jobs. So, I think it was Betty's idea on this one here, attendance at public meeting. So, we wrote a policy here that basically governs, you know, do's and don'ts for board of selectmen on what they do at public meetings. So, we've gone over this a couple of times. It's certainly in the public record. But you know, the meeting you went to, I mean, if we can impose some rules so that we're not violating the law and nobody becomes powerful on their own, you can see the advantage. You went to that meeting with Dr. Guidi and you brought back some great information and you were a key participant. And I've gone to meetings and brought things here and Bill has, so that's something we should encourage. When we have a five-member board, we have to really help people understand how to do that properly. But there is a great value to doing that when it's done well. So, this is an important policy. I appreciate you guys supporting this, this initiative.
So, if it's a, so if it's a public, if it's a public meeting, you cannot have two, two selectmen at that public meeting?
You can.
We just can't vote.
You just can't discuss and vote amongst yourselves. And once there's five, you can have two. It's just, well, there's three of you. You can't have a majority if you're going to engage in discussion.
So, this is only getting good for a short period of time, really.
And if someone were to say, "Well, you know, Bill and Betty, what do you think about this?" And we'll say, "We're sorry, we don't have an opinion. We're just here to listen and learn."
Right, right.
Good point. Okay. Good. So, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the attendance at public meetings by board of selectmen policy as written.
May I actually, actually, sorry, ask for an amendment based on Bill's comment? Can we just change number two where it says two or more members to a majority of members and have it read a major? So, we don't have to change this in a month when there's five numbers?
That is a friendly amendment and I will accept that.
Okay.
Well, that's what I was getting.
Yeah, so...
I was gonna just wait and let it go, go over again, but I didn't know you could do that.
I will accept that friendly amendment. It was friendly, wasn't it?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so the, Joe's motion's made with friendly amendment.
With friendly amendment.
And a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aight.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's a good piece of work. So, we have now a little booklet of policies which I think will be part of an orientation packet for new board members.
Sure.
And a great way for us to get reoriented every year when we, when we reorganize and, and say, you know, what are the rules? How do, you know, how we operate, so...
And I will put them right on the website. So, anything that's adopted will go on the website.
And this is an important piece of work because there's no, the bylaws don't, you know, there's not enough detail in bylaws of how we operate. And, you know, the other policies were also how we engage with the public, how the public can come on and put things on the agenda, the public participation. There's quite a few, so I'd like to see them all together. So, I'll look for them on the website. Oh, and speaking of the website, maybe we'll, you're gonna bring that up at the, at the finance directors?
Yes.
Okay.
There's an important announcement about the website.
So, with the correspondence, the first two are just minutes?
I added an item of correspondence. I had attended a school committee meeting a week ago specifically to support one of the members of our community who had expressed interest in continuing her service as a school committee member for the Whittier Board. And to my surprise, she was not at the meeting. But more importantly, the discussion that the school committee had was that only one letter of interest was submitted. And that happened to be actually our representative from, on our school committee, that's Doug Jeline. And I, I was, you know, very thrilled to see that Doug was selected. I've worked with, with Doug and he's a great, great resource for us and a champion of our public school system as well as our town. So, afterwards, I, and I did not engage with the school committee. I didn't raise my hand and say, "Excuse me. I know that someone in town has submitted a letter. I just didn't wanna interfere with the process." They were having a discussion. They said, "There's only one letter. It came from Doug Jeline." But I knew there was another letter out there. So, when I came home that night, I looked through my file and I realized that the letter from the person who submitted it, expressed interest, was addressed to us and not to the school committee. The appointed authority is the school committee. Now, what's happened, and this was reported in the news the other day, is that the school committee has decided to reopen the, the process of entertaining nominations or interests, letters of interest from people. And I also welcome that opportunity because one of the things that I'm a little upset about is that the school committee made a monumental decision a week and a half ago. And that is that they're going to basically eliminate the town representatives and instead have members of the school committee, the Pentucket School Committee, be direct representatives to the Whittier Voc Tech. And, and I have an objection to that. And I didn't take that up with them in public. I have asked to have some time to talk to them about that in public so that as simultaneously they reconsider our local candidate, they're also considering giving us, the public, the opportunity to have a discussion with them about eliminating a town representative. We, we make a huge financial commitment as a town to Whittier and having our best and brightest children go there. And I don't think that we should eliminate that voice. And that's just my opinion. And I'm gonna express it when given an opportunity, if it becomes an agenda item, which I've requested that it become, to have that discussion. So, I don't know what your thoughts are about that. Betty and Joe.
Jane has been serving and as you say, Doug's a member of the school committee.
Yeah.
You know, if Pentucket has adopted this policy to have a school committee member serve over there and, you know, that's their prerogative.
It is, of course.
Especially now where they're having discussions over there about children attending Whittier Regional and the cost per pupil and isn't that going on right now?
Um, the discussion was about school choice.
About school choice.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a...
Was there a story today? I didn't see that.
Yeah, there's a story today being reported in the papers that there's, the, the potential that Whittier is violating state law and how they're admitting the students. Now, for example, Doug had openly stated, Doug Jeline, our school committee representative openly stated that the only entrance requirement should be residency. But apparently they've been selective and that's not in line with state law. And this, there's some, there's some controversy going on there. So, so again, that to me brought up another thought. I would like my own very dedicated, very capable Groveland-specific member to be a member of the Whittier. Not necessarily, who's looking out for the interests of, of the children in the town and not necessarily looking out for specifically extending the policies of the school committee. That's where I have a problem. And, and by the way, Jane Moranis, who has served for many years, has served us very well. And she has requested to be considered. And when she found out that her letter did not reach the school committee and I, I did reach out to her. I said, "Listen, I came out to stand for you last night and are you aware what happened?" She said she was okay with the decision. She agreed with me. Neither one of us wanted to interfere with the, with the, you know, the voting of the board the, the previous evening, even if it wasn't a technicality, so...
So, is that completely done now? There won't be a representative anymore?
No, right, no. So, right now they've opened the window again.
Okay.
There was actually a deadline of March seventh and they voted even before then. And that's, that's a, a separate issue.
Right.
They, they, they closed the window and voted for Doug before the March seventh deadline. There was a March seventh deadline for anybody that in Groveland that was interested in sending in a letter. Well, we only got one letter. It was Doug's. We knew, I knew that, we knew that there was another... We knew, I knew that, we knew that there was another letter because it was sent to us in error without copying the Penntucket. So, now they've reopened the whole thing. And as they reopen that, I've asked for an agenda item for me to talk to them also about this whole thing about the policy of eliminating our town representative.
Right.
As a concept, whether Jane is interested or not, it has nothing to do with it.
I am, I'm agreement with what Joe just said. And I'm in agreement that number one, I believe we should have a representative that is separate from the, separate from the school board and the selectmen and everything, what have you. They have their own objective, they go in there on behalf of the town people. And I also think it is good still to have our, a school board member be involved as well because, you know, it, it helps to have the, the end of the, the school board people involved in the decision as well. But I definitely think we need to have the input on behalf of the residents from a, from a separate, single party.
Right. What makes this a little bit difficult is that the person they did select happens to be an excellent representative of our town, Doug Jelineh.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, for us, we, we didn't lose anything, if you will.
No, I understand.
But policy-wise, I think it's the wrong decision that you've put a school committee member on that board.
Right.
Now, they're projecting the Penntucket policies, not the town's interests.
Right, right, I agree.
And that to me is a conflict. So, if and when I do get invited and it is an agenda item, I certainly will let you know and I'll report to the board the outcome.
So, are they gonna, they're gonna open it back up to have a representative? Okay.
What makes things a little bit difficult is that the period that they need to probably talk about this is the week that I'm away. So, I don't know if I'll get invited, but we'll see.
And I will just say, they're not necessarily opening up to have a represent, they're gonna open up the discussion again to see who they're going to appoint. So, they still may open it up and still choose to appoint Doug.
All right.
But they are going to open it up again now that they have a second candidate who should have been in the running.
Okay.
And whomever is the representative, whether it's Jane or Doug, I would strongly urge that they come in and see us maybe every couple of months or so to give us an update. What's going on over there? Because we don't get information about what's happening at Whittier. We get the bill, but we don't get the information.
It's one of our, it's the second biggest bill.
Exactly.
It's a huge commitment.
You know, what?
Need a voice.
Am I hearing that students come from other cities and towns that, that some of our kids don't get selected, is, does that, is that what's?
Our kids, our kids are competing with other kids from other towns and because of a selection criteria, we're not, our kids are not getting picked and, but yet we're paying the bill. So, the cost right now, I believe, was 1.8 million dollars. We, as a district, we're spending, three towns are spending 1.8 million dollars to educate children that are not from our towns. That's a little bit of a problem with some people.
That's a problem for me.
And, and they are being pre-tested, so they are, they are being tested and selected and, and transported to the school on Groveland's dime.
And meanwhile, Doug Jelineh said, and I agree with him, "Hey, wait a minute, our kids who wanna go there should go there just on the basis because they come from one of the towns that are part of the, that district."
The regional.
The re, that, the regional, the entity. So, simple concept. So, yeah, 1.8 million dollars is a lot of money for our three towns to be spending on kids that are not from our town. More importantly than that, it's not money, it's our kids getting excluded. That's what's wrong. And like, like Bill said, what are we, why are we part of this arrangement then? Doesn't make any sense.
I, I wouldn't like to be updated.
So, Betty, your idea is, is really, really timely because whoever that representative is, there's a lot going on now. Now, we're talking about, we wanna speak to them about.
We need to have a voice.
A regional agreement with them, you know, with the choice, the selection problem. We have now a lot of concerns and, yeah, we do need to see the.
We'd like to know how many of our children applied, how many got accepted, if they didn't get accepted. Do they have another bite at the apple, should they improve their grades or whatever? Or if they need heck, uh, help with testing?
Great idea.
So, I think, I'd like to know what, what's happening over there. We're kind of removed from Whittier.
Yeah.
Like we're driving by it every day, which is what we do with Penntucket.
Well, you look at the closeness of the relationship we have with Penntucket. In fact, we're even joined at the hip with the Regional Finance Committee. Okay? And we have an enormous commitment with Whittier to support, you know, some of our best and brightest here in Groveland. But we have no relationship practically.
It's disconnected. Okay.
So, thank you for supporting those, those ideas. Appreciate that.
Denise, um, we have a letter from a resident regarding the ATV and dirt bikes. Are they, um, is that on Center Street property?
Um, yes. To be honest with you, I didn't read the full letter. It was left for me this morning, so it was addressed to the board. So, I copied it and gave you all a copy of it.
So, I didn't even know there was a season, May first or November first, that you can drive an ATV. That's the first I've heard of it.
I've never heard that either.
I don't know about that.
I'd like to check that out.
But it's just.
I didn't think we wanted ATVs out there at any town.
I don't think they're referencing, I, I guess I don't know the.
Where are they?
If they're, she's referencing the spot between Alyssa Drive and Center Street.
So, that is that area that would be Center Street over to, um.
It's a rail trail.
So, it's the property we just purchased. Which we now have a no trespassing sign on, so anyone who's ATV, ATVing on that property is.
Can it be, can they be stopped and have their vehicle impounded or something?
I'm sure they could be stopped. I don't know if the police have a mechanism to get onto there and go after them.
They don't, they used, we used to have an ATV, but they gave it up because they thought it was too dangerous to start chasing people through the woods and I kind of agree.
Are you thinking about impounding and selling it?
Yeah, I am, to get the $64,000 that we made.
I mean, I can certainly forward this to the police department and.
I was, I was gonna suggest maybe let's have them take a first crack on it as to what is enforceable here.
I think they're well aware of it.
They're probably gonna say, "Yeah, we know they're out there."
I think they're well aware of it and I think that, uh.
And that's an easy thing to catch because you can hear those miles around.
But they're fast. I think, yeah, we, can we forward this to the police department?
I, I read most of it and I, you know, I, I'm not even sure about the season, but, you know, a citizen is concerned and we will respond and we have.
Exactly, if it's a nuisance to her.
I, I don't believe any, any of the, the police department would put up with the noise. I know I, my shop is right there and I know.
You hear it all the time?
When they get complaints, they're right down there trying to shut it down. And I think it's a very hard thing to shut down. I know they used to have a four-wheeler years ago, they got rid of the four-wheeler and they really have no way of getting out there. But I know they definitely patrol it and they do their best to try and keep it patrolled.
I think she has to realize there's, there are only two crews is out in the community during the day.
Definitely, I think we should move it forward to the police department and let, let them, like she is, she's a resident, she's a taxpayer and.
See if they come up with something.
Yeah, see what they can come up with for her. But I know they, I know from me being in the butter, they do, they definitely, they've been in my yard trying to catch them. They, they've been in my yard trying to go back and ask permission. I say, "Oh, yeah, go right ahead if you want," you know, so they are, they are always trying to be on top of it.
Right. I will forward that to them and ask for my response.
Great.
Thank you, I'm just reading some of the.
And the last item I wanted to mention in the selectman's time is that there's a piece of equipment called a modulator, which I have no idea what it does, but it sounds important. It's owned by Comcast. They have been, there's, has been a discussion for the last year, year and a half or so that the modulator needs to be, uh, exchanged for a newer one that works better. The last time we had a failure of a public TV airing of a meeting was because the modulator was acting up. And we've been able to figure out, not myself, but Chris, been able to figure out that some of the problems are related to the modulator. Last week, uh, Chris shared with me, Chris LaCory, that he was gonna ask Comcast that he, basically enough is enough, we need a new modulator. It's their piece of equipment, it doesn't cost us anything. I could understand the reluctance of exchanging a, a, an expensive piece of equipment, hoping to get more mileage out of it. But we do have a new modulator as of now, or a rebuilt one. And hopefully, that will take care of a lot of the transmission failures that we've had in the last couple of months. So, I just wanted to update everyone on that. Because last meeting, what was it, it was the zoning board meeting, I was getting texts, you know, text messages, "Hey, uh, can't see anything, can't hear anything."
I know yesterday was Sunday. I know the repairs were made last week and I turned Channel Nine on and I know the green was up and the voice was going, but there was no pictures, so I hope they did get it resolved.
And you know what, our guys and, that's you too, Tracy, these guys work too hard.
No, I know, I'm not.
They're too committed to come here and things not working, especially when it has nothing to do with our equipment and, and their, their, their inputs, so. So, I'm glad Chris exercised that stern authority that he was able to impose on them and say, "We, that's it, enough is enough. We need to get a modulator and we can't have failures." Especially with important meetings coming up, budget meetings coming up, you know, the political meeting that's coming up, the candidates night. We, we can't have a failure. And then, you know, people have to wait 24 hours to go see a, a recorded version of it, so. So, that's the latest update on the failures of transmission.
We still.
We still need to do a couple of things before selectman's time.
We, Linda Moore, we read Linda's.
Oh, I apologize.
It's okay.
I was reading, I took my glasses off, I'm sorry, getting late.
So, the other items are really letters that you could review. I have another one for you that the fire chief gave me. So, you can take one and pass those down. So, two of the letters, the one including that I'm passing out, regard, are in regards to 441 Main Street. One is the ZBA's response on some matters and they've referred back to the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, to, um, charge a fine and they cited, um, the violation is per statute, section 1502.2, which states that they can assess fines. So, they are asking the zoning enforcement officer to assess and collect fines based on violations at that site. The fire chief's letter, I actually don't know because I haven't seen it until he just handed it to me. But it's in regards to 441 Main Street, so you can take that as well. The next item is a copy of a letter from Penntucket School that they submitted a statement of interest to the MSBA, the School Building Authority, for the purposes of addressing the needs of a new school. So, this is just their, um, letter and asks that, um, we record this vote by the end of March. But it was given to me today, so I had, did not have a chance to add it to the agenda. But this is just so you can read it, will be on the next agenda to vote if you would like to support this statement of interest. And the last item is a pay increase given to you by the water department for one of the employees of that department.
And the pay increase is because they got a, a license, am I correct?
It is, and to be honest, I don't know how they decide what value is associated with that license. They don't have a contract, they're not under a union contract. They technically fall into the personnel policy that doesn't have pay scale, so I don't know where they came up with this. I actually wasn't even aware that they were allowed to give that, I thought it had to come from this board, so.
Well, I think your assertion is correct and we need to take corrective action by addressing this squarely. So, the first part is to say no, the second part is to ask them to provide us with information as to where they come up with that number.
Yeah, I don't know.
Value associated with the credential.
Well, they're not looking for a vote, so I don't know, does this board historically vote for the water and sewer operators' salaries or just the?
Did they, did they pick this up off the highway, you think?
It's not the same amount, so it's not like they took that. I'm not opposed to giving someone an increase for obtaining a license, but I don't know where the amount came from.
I'm more interested in the process, we're not here to punish anybody. We, we wanna encourage people to improve themselves and we wanna reward that. It's just that the process is, I wanna understand the process so we apply in a standard way.
But what I'm saying is we did it, we did it for the highway, did we set a precedent because we did it for the highway and he's doing it for his department?
Right.
That was a contract.
But this board voted to enter into contract negotiations with the highway union and that's what we did.
Yep, right.
This, I don't know how it was, I don't know if this has always been in place. I don't know if the Water and Sewer Commission has give that out or if it is this board. They're not asking for a vote, they, they gave it to me as informational, so. I guess I was deferring to this group to know if you.
So, they're gonna go ahead and do it.
And they did, they did it in February, February 18th.
Well, that's fine.
And we're going for 2244 to 2370, so.
And they made it retroactive to January 9th. So, they've already paid him retroactive pay.
And we have no recourse, separate board.
I will ask about, like I said, I don't know, I just assumed all pay fell into this group, but.
Well, if you can at least find that out, making sure that there's no technicality here that we're overlooking.
Yep. It's something when they hired him, they put in writing, do we remember or no? That after, what, six months that he would?
He got his operator's license, that's why they're increasing it.
Right.
But it was retroactive, you say?
He must have gotten the license on January 9th.
Back in January.
Which I don't think, if the guy is better than himself and, you know, I don't think we should punish him, but yet I think we should find out if it's legal what happened.
Like I said, I, I don't disagree that if someone's getting a license, they should be rewarded for getting that license, but I think, again, I think it's.
It wasn't like a huge dollar amount either.
It's more, my question was the process.
Right.
It was just informational, they didn't ask for a vote, so.
I remember the times they've given, um, wage adjustments to people in there that they felt was deserved.
Well, I know that their office manager came before this group last year and you had to approve an increase, so that's why I was kinda confused by it.
That's what I'm speaking about.
But I don't know whether, with the, um.
Can you think we can get some clarity from Tom on that?
Yeah, I'll find out tomorrow. I just have a few quick issues, I'll go through them pretty quickly because we're really, really late. So, the first thing is, as of March 1st, we have gone online with the town clerk's office. Residents now have the ability to obtain their dog license online. They can upload the required rabies vaccine reports. They can upload, um, documents regarding spayed or neutered. They can pay for it and then, once it's received, the town clerk will send off the dog license tag. Also, people have the ability to request copies of birth, death, or marriage certificates online. Same thing, they fill in the requested information, pay for it online and it would be sent out to them. So, we are.
So, you can get a marriage license online now in Groveland?
A copy of your certified marriage license, copies.
You can get married online, Betty?
So, we are trying to find more and more of these services that we can put online as a benefit to our residents. They can certainly still come in and conduct all of their business in person. But this allows them, obviously, 24/7 access, they can conduct business on the weekend. We are currently doing the real estate excise, water bills through the same site. I'm looking to do the boat ramp and mooring permits through the website. Working with the police department on their firearms permits through the website, that people can request a permit. The water department is looking to see if they can put their permits online. So, again, it's just a nice resource that we can allow our residents to have access to town hall services after hours or during the day if they can't make it in. The next item is our audit. I do have copies of the audit report for all of you that I'll pass out. So, our audit is complete, the auditors are coming before this group on April 6th. I have our auditor coming before you to just talk about the audit, what their findings were, what steps we're taking as a town to fix those items. I think it's important that he come before you as the independent auditor and talk about our finances, where we are and what we're doing. So, he will be coming before you then. Reminder that articles for the April 7, 27th town meeting and special town meeting should be submitted to me by Wednesday, March 25th. That way, we have time for this group to review them, town council to review the warrant and then get it printed and distributed by April 13th. Candidates night, League of Women Voters, is Wednesday, April 29th. It will be in this room here, they scheduled that with me today, so again, that's Wednesday, April 29th. And then finally, I just wanted to throw out, I do have some things for you to sign that I'll go over. But, um, we've been getting a lot of complaints, obviously, as you all know, about sidewalks and snow plowing. Currently, the highway department does not have the bombardier equipment that the surrounding communities have. And really what that is, is a drivable snow blower that has an arm that sort of blows the snow up and over and allows you to go through those seven-foot walls of snow. And really what that is, is a drivable snow blower that has an arm that sort of blows the snow up and over, and it allows you to go through those seven-foot walls of snow. Currently, all we have is a V plow, so it just plows it. I did ask Bobby to go out and get some prices, if there's anything he can do this year to start getting crews out there. He found a company that actually Georgetown is buying one through as a lease. The acquisition cost is a hundred and fifty-one thousand. His feeling is, if he has to go to capital next year and request funds, we will not have it until the winter twenty seventeen. So December twenty sixteen would be the first time we'd really be able to use it. So another whole winter would go by without having this. If he does have support from this board, the annual payment through the lease is twenty-three thousand dollars. I told him we would find the money this year, and then we'd have to obviously find it and budget for it going forward. But at least that way he would have it, there's one left, so this company has one left before they have to make a new batch. They're not sure if it would be available to us, but otherwise it would be available come the fall and ready for next winter. It is a large expense, so I wanted to bring it to this board, I, like I said, I know there are complaints coming in about sidewalks. If he does go forward with this, and they do have it, he would start using it immediately and start cleaning up sidewalks as he could. So I just wanted to bring it to you all for discussion.
I've gone to two locations, I know I've talked to, I think Betty on one, and Bill on two, and the only time I pay attention in a great way is when kids are at risk, and they're standing on the streets waiting for buses. So here we go again, quality of life issue, you know, we need to spend money to get to a certain place. I certainly would be in favor of Bob acquiring this through a lease arrangement, so that we can get it in place in a week.
But it won't happen in a week, will it?
It depends, like I said, they, they do have one, they weren't sure if another community had already had stake in it, they were going to go back to the other community to see if they definitely wanted it. I told Bob that I would tell him first thing tomorrow what this group, you know, where you were leaning, and if so, he would call them immediately, if you were in favor of it, and see if he could get it.
What did you say the annual lease payment would be?
Twenty-three thousand.
Is that leased to own, or?
It is leased to own, it's a seven-year lease, that's the maximum that this company will finance.
Then we own it?
Then we own it.
But that's not a bad deal, we're on a hundred and fifty thousand bid dollar.
And he had no problem going forward with capital, but then again, we missed the entire next winter, we wouldn't have it until the following year.
So if we, if, he can do it now, if you find the money, and then if he went to capital, he could keep the same lease agreement, it's just they'd have to approve the remaining.
No.
No?
No.
Would that work?
So if we find it now, then it's, we just need to budget for it each year.
Oh, okay, then we don't go to capital.
Correct, and he was gonna let capital know anyways, but yes, we wouldn't go to capital if it was leased. He has several other equipment items that are leased.
You know, if we're lucky, we'll have a, a slow melt, but drains have to be cleared.
We might have to clear out the slush, too.
Slush, you know, so now you have melt, and the kids aren't gonna stand in mud, I know one, on Merritt, on Merritt Avenue, the corner of Merritt and ninety-seven, they finally got down there, and they created a cubby hole for the kids to stand on, and that, that's gonna become a mud pit, so you're gonna have to clear that whole area. I'm just really afraid of, you know, children being at risk. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta create, we gotta rebuild their bus stops safely.
I definitely think it's a purchase we need. I definitely think that if someone got in front of a car and got hurt, or got, or be hurt, killed, or whatever, it's gonna come back to haunt us, I think it should have definitely been something that we done. I just don't have a comfortable feeling that we're gonna get it done this year, but it's okay, I mean, we need it, so if we get it for next year, we get it for next year, but.
Right.
I would like to see something done sooner than later myself, but, hey, be proactive, get it done, and go ahead and lease it.
So if he goes forward with the lease, and they don't have the one available, then they have to build them, and we would be looking to get it in, probably sometime in the summer, but then we would have it for
For next winter, for sure.
The next winter season, other than waiting another full cycle.
Can we rent a few hours from Glau, from Georgetown?
Georgetown doesn't have theirs yet either, so they're in the process as well. They had one, it's not performing, so that's why they're replacing theirs.
They're going through the same company?
They are.
Bombardier?
It's a Bombardier. Yep, so if you are all in support.
I don't think we should wait, we can't afford to wait.
And we definitely can afford it, like looking down the road, we definitely can come up every year with the twenty-two thousand, it's.
Well, it's not a definite, but I told him that I'd wait and hear from this group, and then if I can, if we can fit it in the budget, then he can make the call and see if it's available.
Well, today, we talked about a budget that we're already in a deficit, so now we're gonna be twenty thousand more in a deficit.
Yep, well, he would have to obviously use some of his maintenance money, would have to reallocate his equipment.
Right, so we come out of the highway budget, is what we'll probably do.
Probably not in its entirety, we would still have to commit some money to it.
Can you come up with half?
I don't know, I'd have to talk to him about what's in his maintenance.
So if we approve this, to go ahead and do this, are we doing the right thing for the town people? We're approving it to go ahead and do it, but that, now we're gonna have to override, take from someone else to get this, I mean, it's an important piece of equipment, I'm, I'm agreement a hundred percent, but we're already in a deficit, are we just gonna grow our deficit?
Well, we can't, we can't go into the next year in a deficit, we have to close that deficit.
Right, right.
So it's a matter of what do we do, do we, I mean, I know we can certainly, you know, look to use some stabilization money if we want, we can look to use some free cash. Again, those are one time, and then we have to fix the deficit going forward. But hopefully next year state aid and, and the net school spending will realign, we don't know, but.
Well, we definitely will be poor next year, so.
But I know it was a concern, I know he's been getting calls, I know you all have been getting calls on this matter, so I, I didn't wanna not bring it to you and let you have this discussion.
That's okay, I mean, those are calls we, we welcome, you know, and I think the three of us, the four of us, I think have
We're all listening.
Done a good job in responding to people.
Yeah, I'm all for it, if we can afford it, sure, we need it, we have to do it.
Yeah, I mean, right, I mean, I wouldn't recommend it, or we won't do it if we can't afford it, but I just wanna get the ball rolling and get that call to see.
I think we should move ahead.
Yeah, do you need a vote, or consensus is, is accepted?
I think we should move ahead, I think, and let's hope that it stops snowing, and we can clean up what we have and.
Yes.
Get the kids on sidewalks.
Two things that I'm gonna just hand you to sign, and one of them is a certificate of achievement for an Eagle Scout, so can pass that down. And then the next is the traffic control agreement for the lights right down here at Bates Bridge. This board, not as it sits now, but signed and agreed to this agreement in two thousand and seven. It was executed by the Board of Selectmen, it was executed by our town council. Mass DOT actually lost them, they lost ours and Haverhill's, so they sent me new ones that have to be executed. So it's exactly the same, I read it, it's word for word to what was already agreed to, and the, the way we've already been functioning, but they actually need just documents. Once you sign it, I will send it back to town council, they need to re-review it and sign off on it. One thing is, we do need to accept, in our bylaws, we have traffic regulations. We need to accept some of their recommendations that are in here, that are already in place, but they're not formally in our bylaws, so we do need to accept those at town meeting. And we have to provide proof back to Mass DOT that the town has accepted those.
So that will be part of our?
It'll be on the warrants, but this is what they need first, they don't want us to wait to give them everything, they need this, so.
Is that what you're signing now, Bill?
Yes.
So.
And that's all I have.
Okay, so we have selectman time again?
Yes.
All right, let me just finish this.
I'm sorry for blurting mine out an hour ago.
Okay. So, under selectman time, what I had was, I think we need it, I don't, I think, I don't know how to say this, but anyway, regarding to the building department, I would like to have conversation about requiring our building inspector, I guess you can call it, to, to come to all ZBA meetings. I brought it up in my last meeting with the ZBA, and I know there was some discussion where they didn't think that they all, he needs to go to all meetings. They would like him to come to all meetings, but if push came to shove, the chair and the secretary would coordinate with the building department, telling them what, what meetings they need to come to, what ones they don't, he doesn't need to go to. And their opinion was that little things that have been getting away, if he was there, it would be picked up and caught. So they really are leaning toward all meetings, so, again, they can't say he has to come, it's, I think it's gotta be our board that says what needs to happen, and it's my recommendation that he comes to all ZBA meetings.
And, and I would agree with that, and I would put it in writing, and we send a letter requesting, we can't require it, but we're requesting it.
Well, so you can require it, you are the appointing authority, but it has to be an agenda item that you would vote on at the next meeting, so you can't vote during this time. But if, you certainly can, you know, require as the appointing authority.
That's right.
But that's up to this group, but I will add that as, if you all would like, I can add that as an agenda item.
For which meeting would you like to do?
Next meeting.
The next week, our Friday meeting?
I can, if you'd like it on Friday.
That's fine, you can do it, yeah.
And the other, the other question is, you were looking for a building permit, did you ever get that, Joe?
Yeah, I'm interested in getting, uh, uh, that's something I, I'd like to have this board to have, I'd like to get a copy of building permit or building permits that were officially issued for four forty-one Main Street by the building inspector. I'd like to examine them, and I've shared, you know, I think we should all examine them and understand what was issued.
I don't think that's unreasonable.
No, I can ask that tomorrow.
And the last thing I had was, I know I've mentioned it before, and I guess it maybe has to be an agenda item, but did this board lean in favor and to have the highway position, commissioner position appointed or elected? Are we gonna press forward at town meeting with it, or, 'cause I was gonna start having meetings, or we're not gonna, are we gonna look forward to that, are we gonna stay elected? Or we wanna go appointed?
The rest, in my opinion, I, I would go in favor of appointed.
I think we've tried it, we can try it again.
Well, I think the discussion was, you had the discussion, I think you were all in favor of appointed, but I think the issue at the time, if I remember, was the timeline, you felt that there needed to be a lot of outreach. So it wasn't gonna, so you weren't gonna look for it for this year, I think it was gonna be more for next year, but whatever, if you wanna add an article, I don't think there's enough time to get it to the election.
Right, I think if you added an article, what needs to happen is it really needs to have the right PR.
Correct, and so it does need to go to town meeting, and it would need to go to a town vote.
Right.
So if you wanna add an article, we can certainly, but then it wouldn't be on the election until next year, unless there was a special election for some reason.
Well, let's do that. Hold on for the election in twenty sixteen.
We can add a warrant article, if that's what.
Warrant article this year for an election in twenty sixteen, or even later, if you want.
'Cause his term actually expires next, twenty sixteen, June thirtieth, or May twenty sixteen.
So the current highway commissioner's term ends twenty sixteen, that's when we'll vote to continue, is, you know, give the, the people the choice to vote, to continue that position as an appointed one, but that will all be discussed this year, April twenty-seventh, as a warrant article.
Correct, so if it passes town meeting, then you have a year to do the really public outreach of the residents, yep.
But I think at town meeting, we have to, we have to explain to the people what it's all about.
Yeah, and I, I can start that conversation, we, we, when we're at the, we, we, we can promote things.
Right, we have to give them what's elected and what's appointed, what's the pros, what's the cons?
Like, we're gonna be, probably, I'm sure we're gonna be all in favor of it, you know, we're gonna be, you know, favorable action, and then one of us.
Someone's gonna say the pros and cons of it.
Stand up and say, by the way, um, this is why the board has done this, and I can, I can be the spokesman, and you can chime in, Betty, I'm sure we'll have some specific thoughts about it.
Would it be appropriate to start that conversation at this town meeting to say that we're proposing this for the next voting cycle?
Well, you need to, it's almost like you're going from three to five members, so you have to, have to go to town meeting, and then it has to go to a ballot.
Wait till five members, forget it, wait till five members.
Say it again?
We'll just wait till five members, who?
No, 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 you're misunderstanding, Betty, ma, ma, very good question, can we have a warrant article this year on something that will not be acted upon next year? And the answer is yes, 'cause an example of that is when we did the five-member board, that was a three-year cycle to get the five-member board. So, yeah, we can, we, we don't have to push off till the five members, you, me, and Betty can promote this if we feel strongly about it.
Right, but my point is, it all changed when there's a five-member board?
Well, no, once it goes to town meeting, so, and you can, right, and there are certain things that you can do, some people, you know, residents sometimes get leery of going from appointed to elected, thinking you're looking to oust the person in there.
Right, it's gonna be closer to that point.
Right, well, and you could certainly leave it that the incumbent is free to stay in that position, he would be the one to go from elected to appointed, and then be on a normal cycle, whether it's a year, two years, or his choosing, but, so that way people don't think that this is a tactic to just get rid of him.
No, no, but he's been, he's been very open, open about, he's wanted it.
Right, no, I agree.
Betty can ask him to support us that night, but.
Oh, and he will, I'm sure.
Turn the microphone and say, I'm agreeing on this.
Yep.
Well, it's just, it's just, it's, all it is, is accountability, and you, you know, you have, you can.
Well, I, I feel with a five-member board, we're okay with appointing some key positions now, 'cause, you know.
Which I was surprised, the cemetery, they were starting to appoint cemetery commissioners, now it's back to being elected again. They appointed me.
Did they?
You did, you and.
You did.
Now it's back to being elected again, I don't know how it worked out.
There's also gonna, I think there's gonna be a warrant article from the planning board that they wanna add another member, did you hear about that?
Like an associate member?
Yes.
Did I hear that?
For voting purposes for.
No, I haven't gotten anything from them. Okay.
That's a good idea for them, they're gonna be really busy, they wanna get together more often and really serve the people, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done on that planning board, and so they, they specifically had mentioned that at a meeting, that they were gonna put together a warrant article on that, so.
I weak.
Yeah, you know, in the school committee, we used to have to take a vote to go beyond ten o'clock, where do we set ours, at eleven?
Usually that's based on a custodian salary, I think. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second in.
In favor.
Aye, aye.
unanimous for adjourned, thank you, thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
This is a late shift, Tracy.
This is a late, a late show.